We're re- great.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Uh, I'm remote, Catherine's remote, and because they're in town hall, so we have a quorum. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen of the Town in the Canaan for March seventh, two thousand twenty-three. It's eight thirty A M. And um. I anticipate that we're going to go into executive session at the end of the meeting. So I suppose we amend the agenda to do that. I don't know whether there'll be a vote. As a result of the meeting, there could be, but I don't anticipate it and. To discuss a real estate transaction, I'd like to move we add an agenda item for executive session.
Second here.
All favor, I.
Bye.
So with that, minutes of the last meeting, I'm at work twenty-one. Comments or corrections?
None.
And will we approve the minutes of that meeting?
Second.
All favor, I. Public comments, are there anybody in the room there, Tucker, anybody online?
No, no one's here.
Members of the public are welcome to provide comments to the Board of Selectmen. On the agenda topics scheduled for review and or vote, comments submitted electronically by email may be sent to B O S distribution at the Canaan C T D dot gov and we'll read them. Before the end of the meeting, but apparently we don't have anybody to comment this morning, so we'll move to agenda item three. Which is purchase order increase approvals from Bill Hosen, still there?
Yep, here I am. Morning, everybody. Um. This is just a uh, as required by person policy to increase the blanket purchase order for repairs for the H V A C systems and town buildings. Um, it's beginning of the year, we had their first approval of the twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, we've now we need a second pool for another twenty-five thousand dollars. On average, I think the last year we spent about eighty thousand dollars in the whole course of the year with these folks, but I'm going to bring it to you in twenty-five thousand or increments, so I keep you posted what's going on.
Bill, you sort of faded out there in this. What you said, are you at the microphone or where are you?
Yeah, I'm at a microphone. Yeah, well, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, no, this is a during the June, we had our first request, it was approved for the first twenty-five thousand dollars for his blanket purchase order for H V A C repairs. Um, we write the second, another approval for an additional twenty-five thousand. Uh, on the average, we spent about eighty thousand dollars a year with H V A C repairs. And I'm just like to bring it to you in twenty-five thousand hour increments, just to keep you all up to date what's going on.
So we don't have a maintenance agreement with Daromello, we we.
We do, we have a maintenance agreement, but maintenance is just for maintenance and then as um. Whether they find something wrong or something breaks when they're not here, it's considered repairs, so we do it, we treat it separately. Try to keep the all the contractual preventive maintenance contracts, I have a different account that I use for that as opposed to repairs.
Okay, any questions for Bill on this?
No.
I move, we approve this request from Public Works to increase the blanket purchase order for with M A Garomalo for H K C system repairs. Uh, in amount of the twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
All favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Joe Zagorensky on bridges, inspection services for bridges.
Good morning.
Morning, Joe.
So the engineering department would like to enter into a contract with W M C consulting engineers to perform inspection and estimating services for culverts and bridges under twenty feet. Um, since two thousand eight, we've reconstructed um half of our bridges over twenty feet. Bonus Ridge is our last bridge over twenty feet requiring reconstruction at this time and is scheduled for this summer. Bridges under twenty feet have not undergone any full inspections by Connecticut D O T since the late nineties. Um, they have on undergone recent screenings to make sure they don't have any significant issues. Other smaller structures, culverts, um, and culverts have older or non-existent data. So the intent of these inspections is to gather the data on these structures, identify any deficiencies. And to develop and repair, uh, develop a repair and maintenance plan with opinions of costs. Um, W M C has recently designed and provided construction inspection services. With the West Road Bridge and the wastewater treatment facility bridge. And we're been very happy with their performance, so the fee for these inspection services is estimated at four thousand dollars per location and we estimate inspecting up to seventeen structures. Um, so therefore, the engineering department is requesting authorization to enter into a contract with W M C consulting engineers for inspection services in the amount of sixty-eight thousand plus a contingency of seven thousand for a total of seventy-five thousand.
So Joe, you mentioned, um, this sounds like a good plan, but. D O T, inspecting in the nineties, were they absorbing the cost of that?
Yes.
For the bridges over twenty.
Yeah, the the bridges over twenty are inspected directly by the the D O T and screened by the D O T. These smaller, the smaller, the culverts anyway, are not necessarily inspected by the D O T because of their size, so this is kind of to fill that gap and put up.
When was the last time that, when was the last time that was done, the under twenty footer?
So they were, they were, I think it was ninety-seven for bridges, true bridges under twenty. Um. And then they were screened in the last few years to make sure there was no major issues, but really what the what this is really identifying is the smaller culverts that is just kind of all the nits and gnats around town. Um, and just identifying the ones that we know need a little bit of work and a little more attention and getting them the attention they need.
So it's been twenty-six years, twenty-five, twenty-six years.
For for since a full inspection, yes.
Good.
Hey, Joe, did, did we go out to bid on this?
Uh, we did not, we did not go out to bid, it's professional services and we do have their rates, they um, from the last couple of projects that they've done with us and they've kept the rates that essentially the same.
I have no further questions, anybody have further questions?
None here.
Just in general, uh, this is a general question, just for professional services, are we, do we typically not go out to bid at a certain level or is it? This is a usual case or this is a standard procedure?
Basically, at any level, uh, we we don't typically go out for. Um, we don't go out for competitive bid and the way the D O T does it is they they get qualifications. Uh, we're doing that currently right now for bonus ridge, they they do qualifications, um, and then we we negotiate their fees. It's just to make sure that we get the right fit for the right project.
So the D O T is getting qualifications done on on this particular firm, W M C consulting engineers there, they've been approved by the D O T, is that what you're saying?
Correct, and they're coincidentally um, providing um, inspection services, they've just submitted and it's going through for bonus ridge. Um, now, so we'll have all the data. Real time.
That's for the the greater than twenty feet?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you.
It's the same, it's the same staff, though, it's the same, just.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand.
No, they're the staff, the P E's, how much, how much they make per hour and the markups they're allowed.
Okay, thank you.
I move, we approve this request from Public Works to enter into a contract with W M C consulting engineers for sixty-eight thousand dollars plus a contingency of seven thousand. To inspect bridges under twenty feet as described by Joe, second?
Second.
All favor, I.
My fault.
Thank you. So I have the next one as well.
Temporary police facility.
So the Department, Department of Public Works, um, and the Police Department Building Committee would like to recommend Kunske Humes for architectural and engineering services required to convert the Board of Education space, space located at thirty-nine Locust Avenue. Uh, into a temporary police facility. Um, Humes is, as you guys are are well aware, is the architect for the P D renovation and addition project. They are very familiar with the space and program needs for our P D. They have surveyed thirty-nine locusts um, with the town, they have created a test fit for the space and it's been reviewed and approved by the police chief. They are ready to create construction documents for this temporary space, so and we are going to perform just the minimum work required to meet all needs of the police department. So mainly this work include um, needs to be performed to separate the police functions from the public functions. Such as the public lobby, similar to when you're walking into the police station today. Um, a temporary dispatch locker rooms, interview room, interview rooms, et cetera. So this effort will take Humes approximately eight weeks. Um, we need to be ready to start construction, uh, when the Board of Education moves out in mid to late summer, so we can move the P D over to South, um, out of South Avenue in November. So the, excuse me, the Department of Public Works and the Police Department Building Committee. Request to enter into a contract with Kunske Humes in the amount of thirty-five thousand plus a contingency of five thousand two hundred and fifty for a total of forty thousand two hundred and fifty. And the funds for this work are available.
Question?
What was the total estimate for? Expenses with the new P D for moving folks around and constructing stuff and?
It it's the overall budget is is two million dollars for the for all the the move work that includes includes actually the movers and and. And temporary P D locations for, you know, dispatch and holding and.
And this is part of that, that spend.
This is part of that spend.
No further questions? I move, we approve this request from Public Works to enter into a contract for forty thousand two fifty. For the architectural services of Kunsie Humes, um, for the temporary police for a facility at third and looks Avenue as described by Joe, second?
Second here.
Through the discussion? All favor?
I.
Okay, then finally, Joe, the uh. Police for renovation project.
Yep, so um, the Department of Public Works and the Police Department Building Committee is requesting authorization to enter into a construction services contract with Turner Construction Company. Uh, we requested qualification and fee proposals from six firms, we received five proposals, interviews were conducted with three firms. The Police Department Committee approved unanimously to negotiate a contract with Turner Construction Company at the February twenty-third committee meeting. Um, similar to the Board of Education, uh, projects, we're utilizing a A I A form of contract, which has been modified by the town attorney. Um, where the contract delivery method is a construction manager as a constructor. Where the basis of payment is the cost of work plus the plus a fee uh, with a guaranteed maximum price, so. Basically, what we're buying here is the pre-construction services where Turner will further develop the project schedule, create site logistics plans, two budgets, develop bid packages. And advise on fast-tracking any long lead time items, create a cost flow analysis, et cetera. Um, this will all be done in an open book format. Um, and they'll work with the town and our consultants to create and agree upon a guaranteed maximum price. Once we've agreed upon a guaranteed maximum price, um. We we have a predetermined fee of two point four or five percent of the cost of work. Plus any of the the proposed general conditions and general requirements cost, so and if we can't agree on a a G M P, um, the contract does not have to go forward, so. Um, so basically what we're, what we're seeking here is approval for the hundred thousand dollars for the pre-construction services. So the Department of Public Works and the Police Department Building Committee request to enter into a contract with Turner Construction Company in the amount of one hundred thousand plus a contingency of ten thousand for a total of one hundred and ten thousand. So this work is um. The the funds for this pre-construction, the pre-construction portion is has been funded, so it's available.
Any question?
So if things go half as well with Turner as a, with a library, we're going to be in good shape.
Yes, yeah, we couldn't have gone wrong, we we invited six very qualified firms and we were lucky enough to have five of them submit, so we couldn't have gone wrong with with any of them.
I have no further questions, uh. I move, we approve this request from Public Works and the P D Building Committee to enter into a contract with Turner Construction for a total of one hundred and ten thousand dollars as described by Joe for the. Construction management services uh, for the P D renovation project, second?
Second.
For the discussion, all in favor, I.
My.
Unanimous, thank you, Joe.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Joe.
Tiger has a bunch of.
Morning.
Morning.
Uh, so this uh, this first item, excuse me, is for um. Approval request for um, entering into a contract with Cambiary Masonry. Excuse me, for the uh, wave any walls service area project. Um, Phoebe Knowles, the Executive Director of the Conservancy is here with us, this is a partnership with the Conservancy, a fifty-fifty partnership. We went out to bid. Cambiary was the low bid at two hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. I added a fifteen percent contingency of thirty-three thousand three hundred for a total of two fifty-five eight fifty. It's planned that um, this project will be split um, with the Conservancy um. Fifty-fifty going uh, for for the project itself, Cambiary uh, did the original work, um, the first project ever for the Conservancy. Which was the trail coming from the forecourt and leading down um, the hill through the um, the the trees there, uh, the flexi pave trail. They did a very nice job and then they did the most recent project with the Conservancy and the town, which was the installation of the um. Plantings along the cert, along the South Avenue Drive, the wave and you drive coming in from South Avenue on both sides of this of the road. They've done very nice work and um, we're uh, we're confident he'll he'll give us a nice project uh. For this uh, this phase.
Was it bid out, Tiger, or?
This was bid, yeah, we actually uh, we solicited bids last year, the bids came in quite high. Um, due to the timing, so we went back out again and uh, rebid, so overall, we had received five separate bids um, for it. The bids on this ranged in price uh, from two hundred and twenty-two thousand five fifty at Cambiary all the way up to seven hundred and sixty-three thousand seventy-seven dollars and ninety-one cents.
What?
I did a uh, it up, I did a post-bid breakdown with two of the uh, well, all three of the of the bidders this past round. To make sure that there was no ambiguity in the bid, that the documents were um. You know, complete and understandable and that everyone was on the same page. The uh, the the high bid there i- in the seven hundred range, he's um, he's mostly a landscaper and he was bidding out. All of the uh, masonry work, there's a substantial amount of masonry work and um. I don't think his mason gave him the best price, um. So if you.
Long statement.
Right, so if you factor in that, we had uh, we did have out of the five received, we had two, uh, three bids that were all in the. In the somewhat acceptable range of from Cambiary up to Fortino Escalante from two twenty-two to three forty-two. Um, but again, I I did have a, you know, because of this, the spread of the projects, like I. I met contractor and asked him the question, well, did you know everything, did you understand everything, was it, was it, you know? Was it a cohesive design, did you understand exactly what was being asked and yes, and a lot of it just comes down to um. Different fortes for different individuals and Cambiary actually has both a masonry and a landscaping background. Whereas the others were either a landscaper or a mason.
And also they've got the experience with wave, which is important, so.
Right, so I think that, I think that Cambiary was well suited um, for this project itself.
Tiger, uh, just on the um, the split that we have with the wave me Conservancy. Uh, but we we budget, what is it, three hundred thousand, I think, for annum, uh, to the Conservancy, it it, do they use that to apply to their fifty percent to all these projects and and what if they reach capacity?
The three hundred thousand is actually our match to the Conservancy, they're matching our funds back, so um, the three hundred will buy us six hundred thousand dollars worth of work in the end.
And where are we thus far on that, on the six hundred?
On it.
In terms, in terms of these types of projects for fiscal year.
We have two, well, it's it's not necessarily fiscal year, since it's it, um. It, well, in this case it is because we only have expenditures this year in fiscal twenty-three, um, however, it'll, since it's a capital item, it'll roll, the uh. We have two hundred and seventy-three thousand, just under two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars expended, um. And we have um, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars encumbered. Uh, and then we'll have this project and we'll be releasing some of the encumbrances um, from previous projects. Um, to uh, open up some additional funds, so the uh, the contingency from previous projects will close out. And then uh, and then add this contract in, so we'll be getting very close to um, the upper end of uh, the amount that we've given them so far. There is the thought to utilize the ARPA funds that were were uh, provided to the Conservancy as well at two hundred and fifty thousand and. We might utilize those funds for this entire project since we bid it twice and and I just need to follow the, I just need to make sure that we followed all the requirements for ARPA. And if we did, the thought might be to utilize the ARPA funds for this project instead.
Which have already been granted to them, is that correct?
That's correct, have already been great, they were, they were one of the first um, um, issuance of the ARPA.
Right. Do we have, or could tell, I'm sorry, do we have authority to tell the way the Conservancy how to use the those uh, grant funds? Or did they make that decision?
No, they make that decision, but that was actually through request.
Okay.
Well, that's not really true, Tiger, you know, under the M O U, they can propose projects and we can agree with them or veto them, um, we've never had a disagreement. I think we have one disagreement, I suppose, over. Some deputies maple trees, but um. Um. So our commitment, you know, this was actually their project, uh. Uh, in terms of the idea and then we tiger work with them, this has been going on for two years. Um, and uh. But we've, we've really come to, Steve Beschinsky presented last week to the Board of Finance, you might want to watch that that presentation.
I saw that, I saw that.
So I think the uh, the conservator was concerned about them being over obligated to raise funds, but I think that Steve is comfortable where we are. Um, but we don't actually give them the funds, we, you know, they propose their project. If we agree and and we uh, we go forward with the project, we split it fifty-fifty.
Okay.
There are always, there are always improvements on our property, so. We're always bid by the town and controlled by the town as far as the execution of the project.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Any further questions for Tiger on this one? I move, we approve this request from Public Works in partnership with the Wavy Park Conservancy to enter into a pattern of Cambiary Masonry for a total of two fifty-five eight fifty, which includes a fifteen percent contingency. For the reconstruction installation of a new wall for the service area that we've been house, as described by Tiger, second?
Second here.
Any further discussion, all favor, I.
I.
Thank you, thank you. This next item is um. A design contract with Architectural Preservation Studios in the amount of nineteen thousand dollars. And contingency of two thousand eight hundred and fifty for a total of twenty-one thousand eight fifty um, for the design of a. Uh, an ADA compliant accessible route uh, from the north side of Town Hall to Vine Cottage. Um, at present, we have a a nice granite staircase, uh, stone staircase. Leading from Town Hall to the Vine Cottage, um, but we don't necessarily have a, an accessible route on that path. We have an accessible route to the Vine Cottage from the main street sidewalks. Um, but it would, it would provides for the fact that someone with a disability would have to leave the Town Hall. Go down the sidewalk, uh, down, down our pathway, our accessible sidewalk to the main street sidewalk, then to Vine Cottage and come around and um, that's a. Too far of a path of travel and too different than um, just walking across the street and navigating a couple of stairs. So we asked Architectural Preservation Studios to come forward with a proposal. To look at the area, especially given the fact that it's a W P A wall, um. And um, and the areas is quite uh, beautiful at present, so we want to make sure that there's a nice aesthetic event. To uh, to this proposed path and uh, we'd like to go forward with this project.
This takes one of the must-have ADA boxes that the.
That's correct.
Our federal government has, and what do you, what's the estimate for?
I don't.
The cost of construction.
I don't know yet, because I don't know the path, we have, we have three um, ideas as to how to um. Generate that that path, one is a Lula, which would be a, you know, a small lift, which we'd like to stay away from, another is to put a ramp in the area between um. The uh. The stairs and the uh, the drive and then another is to actually put in a sidewalk along the drive, heading up to Vine Cottage and around, so there are three very disparate um. Looks or or options with disparate costs, so I, at present, we don't, we did, we had to see exactly what would fit and what would be aesthetically pleasing and then we'll look to cost as well at that time. So I've asked them to give us a couple of options, just don't know what um, what is is technically feasible yet.
We do have to do this, right?
Yeah, this is, yes, yes, this is a requirement.
Right.
And actually, s- since we merged the properties, right, we uh, it's regarded as one campus as opposed to a separate facility, um.
That's correct. So this is, this is a, an accessible path between facilities on the same campus.
Right.
Excuse me.
Further questions?
None here.
Makes sense.
Uh, I move. We approve this request of Public Works and to do a contract with Architectural Preservation Studio for a total of twenty-one thousand eight fifty, which includes a contingency for the design services. Of a new ADA compliant route to the Vine Cottage from the Town Hall. Second?
Second.
For the discussion, no, all favor?
I. I.
All right, thank you, uh, this last item is for um. Work at our backup generator at the wastewater treatment plant, um, it needs a new radiator, um. The radiator lasts about ten to twelve years, the installation, um, the original generator is dates back twenty-three years, this will be our second um. Radiator for it, so we're we're right on time as far as replacement. I do have to note that uh, right now we have our, our trailer mounted um, generator, the one that's the multifaceted. Um, hooked up right now at the wastewater plant, so if we have any problems, we uh, we have our, we have a system already in place for um. For any, any uh, power outage, which is, which is excellent, it actually takes a little of the pressure off of this project because we have a backup generator sitting, standing by for for the facility. We got a price from Northeast Generator for nineteen thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars, we added a contingency of ten percent for nineteen eighty-six for a total of twenty-one eight forty-six eighty. Um, the project is contingent upon a uh, a transfer of funds from um, the sewer fund. Uh, the contingency of the sewer fund by the Board of Finance, we'll be bringing that to the Board of Finance um, on Thursday for their consideration. Um, but we'd like to go forward, we need to go forward with this project for the uh, for the repair replacement.
This was in the budget.
This, it is not, that's why we're asking for this, uh, money's coming out of contingency, this was not an anticipated.
Was this bid out?
No, but Northeast Generator is our, they're the ones that um, manage all of our generators, they've done excellent work for us in the past.
Well, but this is, this is coming out of the major maintenance reserve for the, and that's a couple million dollars.
We'll either ask for out of the major maintenance reserve or we'll ask for out of, out of contingency of the sewer fund, the sewer fund has its own contingency. It'll be, it'll be up to the Board of Finance to determine which, which bucket wants to come out of.
Okay, I move, we approve this, uh, we. I move, we approve this request from Public Works to enter into a counter with Northeast Generator for a total of twenty-one eight forty-six, which includes a ten percent contingency for the uh. Repair to the standby generator, the wastewater treatment facility, as described by Tiger, second?
Second.
For the discussion, all favor, I.
I.
Thank you, Tiger.
Thank you.
Brings us to a full-time employee, is Cheryl there today?
I'm here. Good morning. I also have Sarah with me. We are here to present Stephen Payne as the Assistant Zoning Inspector. Stephen currently works as an assistant foreman for Anthony Tomas Builders, he has been with them since two thousand seventeen. He interprets building plans, works with land use on job sites and works with projects on zoning issues. He's currently at Norr Community, working on his degree. Uh, throughout the interviews, we could see he was a great communicator, very personable, and we believe he would be a great asset to the town. We did receive sixteen resumes, we interviewed five, we brought three back, Sarah put a practicum together for them to present. And we are presenting Stephen as our top candidate, so I don't know, Sarah, if there's anything.
Um, seemed like a great candidate, young, a lot of energy and hopeful that we have a department that stays for a long time.
We were happy to get her help.
I second that motion.
Just for transparency, the name Payne, you should be familiar because this is Paul's son.
Yes.
Our fire marshal's son.
We like that continuity.
Yes, and there's no um, nothing in our codes that would object us from hiring, but we did put him through the process. Yes, and there's no, nothing in our codes that would object us from hiring. But we did put him through the process.
Any questions? Move is we approve this request and we remember resources to hire Stephen Payne as the full time Assistant Zoning Inspector. Second.
Congratulations, you got some help.
Appointments and reappointments. Light Review Board actually has, for some reason, a off cycle term of May one. And we didn't make these reappointments, I believe, last year. So this is a three year term ending May twenty five. And all the incumbents, Ian Hobbs, Brock Sacks, Clarice, Tisgornia, Paul Tully and Bethany Zarro are up for reappointment. Any questions about this board? Incumbents. We don't do a lot of light actions, but they're there as spares when we need them. So I move we make these reappointments. Second.
Second here.
All in favor? And the Audit Committee has had a vacancy. George Morales stepped down after he was one of the founding Audit Committee members. And George has done great work and we thank him for his service. That leaves a vacancy, which Roy Abramowitz is a CPA in town. Everyone knows Roy from many years of and I actually vied for the Town Council seat back in two thousand. John Engel received and Roy has been working with the Audit Committee through this past audit. He has the support of all members of the Audit Committee and so I I move to appoint. This is subject to Town Council approval. We should put that on the on the agenda, but I move we appoint Roy Abramowitz, a three year term vacated by George Morales, ending December one, two thousand twenty five.
Second here.
For the discussion?
This, I'll just say that this has nothing to do with the the candidate, but I do think that the process of reviewing candidates, particularly for the Audit Committee, I would say the same for the Board of Finance, where two bodies have to go through the process of reviewing the candidates. So presumably and ideally a pool of candidates and then reviewing those and then going through the process of approval through both the Board of Selectmen and the Town Council. We haven't gone through that process with respect to this next, this open position in the Audit Committee. And so I'll abstain on this particular vote because I think that the that while I'm not disagreeing about the candidate, what I do think is that the process needs to be going through with respect to a pool of candidates, particularly a diverse pool of candidates. We, it's probably one of our only boards or commissions where there is no gender diversity right now in that particular board. So I'd like to see that the pool of candidates include gender diversity and not to say that that, you know, any one of those individuals wouldn't be qualified. So we go through that process and with respect to both the Board of Selectmen and the Town Council. So I will abstain from this particular vote because I think we need to go through a broader process.
Would you say, Kathleen, that, you know, Roy Abramowitz is someone who actually went back and recommended we create an Audit Committee years ago. He's been Yep, and he's he's a fine CPA and someone who's been wanting to serve the town for a long time. Nobody else in the past five years has asked to join the Audit Committee. So I just think someone who's been dedicated and and is highly qualified for the position is someone we would like to get the opportunity to serve. So with that, I oh, so you you're abstaining. Nick and I are voting in favor. So that's two, two, two in favor and one in contention. Okay, moving on to contracts under ten thousand dollars. Any questions about the contracts?
Not here.
Overpayments to taxes. I noticed the real estate item here is Wavine Care Center. I don't know quite why. It may be the inn which pays taxes, I believe, for their so I don't quite understand why. There's an adjustment here for Wavine Care Center, but if you want to defer until I get that information, it could, but I
I'm not sure. It does say Owen O. Bridge, so it may be either the the care center, excuse me, the inn or it might be the property with the yellow.
Oh, it's probably the yellow house. I forgot that they actually own that as an investment property. Temporarily. So I guess that there must be have been a an adjustment, I suppose. So that makes sense. I guess if that's the the reason, otherwise I have no questions about the tax overpayments and will we approve the refunds?
Second here.
All in favor? Okay, so before we go into executive session, I'd like to make a comment about, I sent you an email last week Home and Towers and Verizon sent me an email saying they they'd like to put on the table option B for a proposed West Cell Tower. They actually proposed this option B last fall and we decided to go forward only with option A because that's the preferred location for carriers to be higher on a ridge and this this proposed location, which has been most of the work has has been done, but they're going to do a complete site plan. We should receive that later in the week. I have a meeting with Dan Rabin on Friday and Sarah. And their agenda for March is fully booked. So the eight twenty four review, which is a logical first step to see if the P and Z as the land use body approves this location would go forward at the end of April, which I think is April twenty fifth. And so I'm not sure anything, any questions about this?
So Kevin, could you go through the process a little bit there? So are they going to present to us this particular proposal to the Board of Selectmen? Or is it going straight to the Town Council?
As we did back in June, I think it was June that we started, I'd have no problem having them come to present to us before it goes to the P and Z and you know, essentially the lease agreement is the same. This is not a question of what the terms of the lease will be. It's the same property. And that had been analyzed by Attorney Doug Lamont and and, you know, the point here is the town is not as interested in the revenues from a cell tower. We're interested in providing service to our residents as is Verizon and AT and T. They they really want to improve their service and that in the western side of town, the the somewhat benefit of this alternative location is that it probably obviates the need for us to look at a tower up on Urban Park. Because this is six, must be nine hundred, eight hundred feet further east, which gives somewhat less service to Stanford, North Stanford, and but gives more service to the to the west of Weed Street. Obviously, the tower has to be somewhat higher because of the change in elevation. But so if we could have we could have Verizon and Homeland come perhaps in two weeks to present to us, but
So is there a demand study that's been done in that area? You said it, we're not going to be
Well, as Ray Vergharty said, you know, we've talked to VCOM, which is an independent in terms of you know, these, these, these radio frequency engineers work for all the carriers and all the tower companies. So when you talk about ECOM is prepared to come in and do a a review. I forget what the estimated price was, I think it was ninety seven hundred dollars to do the kind of drive test that was done in two thousand fourteen. I I think I will have become write a report first. Basically, one of the things they emphasize is these, these computer models that are generated as far as coverage are as good as a drive test these days. So and that's what the carriers present to to the Connecticut Siding Council. Obviously, the Connecticut Siding Council can only approve and will only approve the tower that's that's needed. So on the one hand, the fact that both Verizon and AT and T plan to invest their money as well as Home and Towers investing over a million dollars in the tower itself, to me, pretty much shows the need from a business point of view. These folks don't build towers that they don't need. But we will do the VCOM. We will have VCOM do a do a drive test. The the one thing we've been talking about is the, some people think that the tower up on the northwest corner, bonus ridge, would somehow give service down as far as West School. And we could simulate that coverage by by erecting a an antenna up at that location. That location won't be built until later, won't become operational until two thousand twenty four. They've begun their their preliminary site work there. So that's a consideration. We have to decide whether we want to spend more money to do an actual drive test to show people what the current state is versus two thousand fourteen. And so we can have that discussion further. But in the meantime, it's pretty obvious to me, carriers don't spend their money without a need. And, you know, I've talked anecdotally, you'll talk to a lot of people that confirm they have no service in certain locations such as Verizon, you know, at the Country Club. The Country Club is still in discussions with SBA Towers, the owner of the Country Club Tower. And Verizon very definitely needs to be on the Country Club Tower. So need is there for for some carriers in certain parts of town. So why don't we, why don't we have Ray Vergharty and Verizon come in in two weeks and we can ask those questions and see if we want to hire a VCOM to do the drive drive test before P and Z, they only need a couple of weeks' notice to go and do the drive test.
Okay, yep, put it on the account on the schedule.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
So that's all I have as far as announcements. Do you have anything? And then we'll go into executive session.
I just had a quick one. It's it was Employee Appreciation Day last week and and I think that there was breakfast on Monday. I'm sorry, I couldn't be there. But just a shout out to all the the Town Hall employees and 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 the the school board employees. Really appreciate what they do each and every day and thank you for serving our town.
You're here.
I second that. So we will go into executive session. I said, I don't anticipate we'll have a vote coming out. But so and so we will adjourn immediately after coming out unless we have a vote. That project should take fifteen minutes. It's nineteen, nine thirteen now. So I would invite Tucker and Tiger into the executive session with us. I guess Bob Matili is running the the mechanics. So Bob could say if he wishes to.
I'm here.
Get the vote? Go in executive session?
Nine thirteen, we, I move we go into executive session. Second?
Second.
All in favor? I, okay.
Okay.
Nine thirty, we came out of executive session. We will not have a vote today. This matter requires for the discussion and negotiation. So we will I move we, Nick had to depart to catch a train a few minutes ago, but I move we adjourn. All in favor? I. Okay, thank you all and